Please call the roll.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Shichtel.
Here.
Mr. Pankow. Mr. Bag.
Yes.
Ms. Bari.
Yes.
Ms. Applegate. Councilwoman Jivers.
Yeah.
Mayor Marata. Vice Chairman Huberman.
Here.
Chairman Clark.
Here. This advised notice of time, date, location, extent known, agenda, the subject meeting was promptly posted in public place reserve for such or similar announcements on October twenty third, two thousand twenty-three. Transferred to the Times, the Princeton, Pack and West Windsor, Plainsboro News in October twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, and filed the township clerk on October twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, um. Before I ask for public comments, I just want to remind everybody that if you have any typos or corrections for minutes, just please submit them either through an email or send them to Cindy after.
Corrections, if we want to change the verbiage.
Verbiage is something different. Yes, we can, let's debate. I have some actually verbiage that I'd like to include. Thank you. I'll open up to the public to step up to the mic and give your name and number, name and address, and on any item that's not on the agenda or pending. Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Let's look at the minutes from October fourth. Yeah, Sue, you had some things that you needed to.
Right, page five. It's the fourth paragraph, the second sentence, her concerns were the layout with only one entrance to the property and not enough room to accommodate fire trucks. I would prefer that red and no driveway for access. No driveway access to northernmost portion of the building for emergency vehicles.
Okay. Anybody else?
It does have one correction on page five under the roll call. Pankow was not here for that. He left at ten.
She has that in, on the top of page five, it says, Mr. Pankow left the meeting ten p.m.
But then, but below under roll codes, I as Patel, Shichtel.
Oh, I have it twice. Okay, I'll review it from the eye. I did have it as.
You have it absent and the, okay, good catch, thank you.
I sent it my emails.
Yep. Okay, I had a couple, a couple items. Top of page five. I'd like a little more detail regarding Ms. Anderson, such as concerns she did not receive notification. I think we looked at how, what the distance was from her house. Right, Jerry? And, and she was beyond the.
Two hundred feet, right?
Beyond the two hundred feet. So I'd like to get that in the minutes, please. Yeah, and then the only other thing that I had. You can put it on page, I guess on page four, is it? Yeah, on bottom of page four, this is something I think that needs to be included. At the very end of the application, when we were debating, I mentioned that there might not be enough bike storage for all the hundred eighty units, and I recommended that they designate, and Jerry made it a condition, they designate bicycle storage space and an area where it would be built if they needed to expand, and they could bank it so that they wouldn't have to come before the planning board to then ask for it. And then everybody nodded in agreement, the applicants said, great, and Jerry put it down as a condition. I know I said a lot, but if you can just kind of summarize something that basically says they're going to bank their extra bike storage. I didn't see it.
I, I thought I put it.
Okay.
Okay, I will add that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the October fourth, two thousand twenty-three minutes with the amendments suggested.
Some move.
Second.
Move by Linda, second by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm absent.
Okay, one. Annis is abstained, Rob isn't abstained. Okay.
I abstain as well.
Okay, Joy is abstained. Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along here. Next up, application. PB nineteen dash oh eight has amended. The towns at West Windsor, formerly known as Heritage Village, amended final site plan subdivision, two thousand, two thousand forty-four, Old Trenton Roadblock, twenty-eight lots, fifteen point oh two, oh three, twenty-one property zone in the R dash five D district, M L U L is eleven one twenty-three. Is the applicant here and represented?
Yes. Good evening, Shirley and Roberts for the applicant, the K of Nanians, the towns at West Windsor LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Publication and service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, you, you have a bunch of witnesses that you're going to have testify?
Yes, we think it's a fairly simple application. I only have two witnesses tonight, our engineer, our traffic engineer and our civil engineer. We think the presentation will be fairly brief and of course will be.
We're, we're looking for brief here.
Yes.
But we'd like to swear both of your witnesses in, please.
If you could both raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm a testimony about? So swan or affirm, could you please state your full name and spell your last name? When do we start with? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to service and group of publication, I did email the planning department, cut and zip everything, but I did want to do. Thank you. Okay, again, my name is Shirley Roberts, representing the applicant tonight. This is an application for amended final major subdivision and final major site plan for our community called the towns at West Windsor. I'm sure the board is aware of where it's located, Winston Heights Town Road. There, those are both county roads. Just quick background, the subdivision rules, subdivision and segment rules granted by this was back in October of two thousand twenty, and the project construction is underway. The approved plan currently show a one-way eastbound internal access drive from our community into the adjacent Windsor Point project. I believe that's not underway yet in East Windsor, and that project had requirements by both the county of Mercer and township of East Windsor to have that one way turned into a two-way cross or reciprocal connector road between the two projects. And we, as an accommodation to our neighbor, agreed to come back to you in order to try to accommodate that on their, for their project and ask for our one-way access eastbound to be revised to a two-way to allow for westbound movement from West Windsor in, in through our roadway system and out to Princeton Heights Town Road. I, there are, I believe we provided the, the board with the copies of both the county and the East Windsor approvals, the conditional approvals that require that for the Windsor Point project. In addition, Mercer County Planning Board sent this board just this past week a letter explaining the reason for its condition in connection with the Windsor Point project. And so again, we're just doing this really as an accommodation. It's not needed for our project, whereas us trying to accommodate with the county and our neighbor to support the county's master plan with respect to good circulation for, for traveling in this county. We have received, we had a TRC meeting in September twenty-first, and we have had, we have a number of review letters. I'm happy to say that the letters had only a few comments and that we've worked through them, and we've been able to satisfy all the comments. And I, it's my understanding that there are no longer any concerns or issues raised by any of the board professionals or anybody else from the township, such as the township landscape architect engineer or the fire chief, Mr. Lynch. So now, again, it's pretty simple application, so I would like to put on our first witness, which is Michelle Brehoff, our traffic engineer.
Jerry, was there proper notification or is it needed?
Yeah, I indicated earlier, publication and service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Yeah, if you could just state your name again and your and your credentials.
Sure, Michelle Brehoff. I am a principal at Colliers Engineering and Design. I am the head of the traffic planning group for the state of New Jersey. I am a licensed professional engineer since two thousand fourteen, a degree in civil and environmental engineering from Northeastern University. I locally appeared, I don't believe I've been before Westminster, but I've been before East Windsor, Robbinsville, Ewing.
So before we talk about this application, could you?
East Windsor, but desirable to the point where that was eventually approved as a cross-access. It utilized the traffic signal that was being constructed by Windsor Point, which would facilitate a safer ingress and egress through the signal. Through, again, working with East Windsor and the county, it was then contemplated that maybe this should be a two-way access. So the purpose again tonight is to, to come back and make that modification so we could approve, hopefully, that two-way cross-access between the project. As far as my part. Okay.
You issued a letter report in connection with this application.
Yep, so, yep, so I, I issued a letter to this board, to this town about the cross, the cross-access, the two-way cross-access. And basically, the, the purpose of this cross-access is again, just to provide that better flow of traffic, better circulation. However, you know, the predominant usage of this cross-access, it would be for the towns at West Windsor development to come to Windsor Point and utilize that signal to facilitate their left turns out and just have that, that controlled access point. So that is still the predominant point of the cross-access. As far as going the other way, so if you're picturing the East Windsor, Windsor Point development going to the, the towns at West Windsor, you know, what we are contemplating and what we are thinking, that it's probably not going to be used a tremendous amount. There's no great reason for a vehicle who wants to end up on Princeton Heights Town Road to circumvent through the, the town that West Windsor development, all the way out to Princeton Heights Town Road, and then make that left when they can just go to the access on Old Trenton Road, go to the light at Princeton Heights Town Road, and then, you know, be in the same route as they would have been otherwise. So if I had to quantify it, I would say probably less than five peak hour trips may choose to do that. You know, I know that the county in their original approval for the towns at West Windsor for this development did say that left turns out of the access on Princeton Heights Town Road would be permitted. However, you know, there would be a condition in which they would monitor that for safety and, and efficiency, so.
Michelle.
Yes.
The, the intersection of Old Trenton Road and the Princeton Heights Town Road going to as well as dedicated light, left turn light at that intersection. I'm just trying to envision.
Yeah, so the intersection of Old Trenton Road with Princeton Heights Town Road is a signalized intersection with a left turn lane, the Princeton Heights Town Road.
Reason I'm asking is a curve, if you're going up east side, eastbound on five seventy-one, this slight curve over there. I know two people I know they have a silver, people are making a right turn or left turn, and car from coming from the curve side, they hit them, make a left turn, it's dangerous.
For, for, I'm sorry, for the towns at West Windsor Development? Yes, and I, I, I understand.
The county allowed the left-hand turns out on five seventy-one. That's, that's not part of the application here for this evening. The county may allow left-hand turn lanes out of this development on five seventy-one heading westbound.
Sam, let me, let me swear, let me swear, if you could raise your hand. You swear affirm the testimony you've given and any future testimony given with truth.
Just because that, that was the way things were and reviewed when it was just the towns or the heritage application that was approved. Now you're adding in, Sam, how many units from the East Windsor Development?
There's a hundred and eighty-nine in the East Windsor Development. Again, looking at the traffic study that was prepared for that, I would anticipate the number for traffic, and that this is probably even a high estimate to be somewhere less than five peak hour trips that would choose to, to do that right now. Like I said, they would opt most likely to use the signal at the driveway and then the signal at.
Right. Old Trenton. That's what we would expect. When, when I looked at the memo though, on a lot of this, we just, for the record, see Aurora Associates memo from James Coconour dated September fifth peak hours, not having volumes. Okay. But now we're adding a second development into the, you know, that could, could feed into this of a hundred and eighty-nine units. So is I guess you're saying there was no gap study to, to look at the increased volume from, from a second development that could, could use our road. It's very dangerous.
No, and again, I, I understand for this two-way cross-access and.
They did, but there, there wasn't any like gap study or.
There was not a gap.
I didn't see any, any traffic studies like updated or anything, not that I think it would take very long to do then, to have that option of doing that.
I mean, that's, that's not for, for me to eligible impact for the driveway at Route five seventy-one.
And the county's approval for our project dated, it's from October twenty twenty-one, and I think Michelle did mention that paragraph one, they said they would monitor it and they would reevaluate depending on, you know, what happens in the future now with respect to partners and agency. Just sent a letter in supporting the request for NASA, so perhaps it's that they're not aware of some of the experiences.
So you're getting some other fidelity over the point. I mean, I'm just saying my concern right now, more traffic will be coming and.
So again, that, the application is with respect to just making it a, a cross easement. Your, the issue that you raised, which is significant, is separate and apart from what we're proposing to do now.
Because you're more traffic will be adding now, you have more traffic now.
Can't say no or what?
But do you think people from the East Windsor Development are going to cross over Trenton Road, go into the development and make a left on five seventy-one?
That's what we expect.
I don't expect that.
Well, no, we expect them to go out onto Old Trenton Road at the, the new signalize, and we expect that, but you know, the traffic report here says certain amount of people, which was thirty-seven and thirty-nine.
That's, that's for heritage, that's for the, the plan.
The town's a heritage only, but when you add the, the East Windsor Development onto that, the numbers, the numbers will go up. We want a higher volume of people being able to make this, is that?
But that's.
Is there? No, this isn't the light, because you're, you're going to go out to, yeah, there's a signalized intersection, which is great, five seventy-one. And then they can make a right, but they can also make a left, even in rush hour.
I don't, you know, number one, I don't see any problem with, that goes across Old Trenton Road, and we need that because that makes it safer so that anybody in this development in, in, in West Windsor can go out and make a left very easily.
It is a shorter way. If you're making left turn on five seventy-one, there's a shorter way. You avoid two signals because one signal right at the intersection of.
It may be shorter in distance, it may not be quicker because you're navigating through local roads in the development to get to, and then you're going to be sitting there waiting for the fifty mile an hour cars to slow down enough for you to have a gap.
But.
So you better have gone to the line.
Another discouragement I see is along, along road B, there are speed bumps. Um, it like multiple speed bumps, and so that would, that's another discouragement to the driver to want to try that.
I'd go to the light, get a left turn, wave the left turn green arrow and go.
Any logical person would do that.
But our issue is that cross-access, our issue is not five seventy.
And the cross-access, I think, is, is, is needed.
So if you have that cross-access and don't make a right-hand turn, nobody from that development is going to turn that way. They're going to turn left.
I'm not following what you're saying.
If, if the towns people or the East Windsor Development can come through that access into our development, and we stop them from turning right, they'll have to go left and come out the exit that
Yeah, okay.
the towns already has, it's not.
You're going to stop people that are in the town's development from making that turn too, right?
Yeah.
No, you're going to stop the ones coming from East Windsor.
No, but if the development in West Windsor, and I left through the traffic light, and I want to come back, and I wanted to go.
Yes.
The only, the only problem I have on that segment of a road is that there's no sidewalk connection. Yeah, I think it's important because you'll have a lot of, you know, you may have young people in there.
Yeah.
Right. Linda, this is Quasi, the traffic consultant.
Yeah, and David, why don't you raise your hand and, and, you swear or affirm this testimony about giving me a treat.
Thank you. I just have a few words for this, as since I'm the traffic consultant here. The numbers that you were referring to, the thirty-seven and nine, it did not include the east, east segment, but I received the letter that they prepared based on the OD study, the origin destination. It looks like nobody will make that turn, right turn, go through the neighborhood and make another left. So that number is very negligible. That's what they were claiming, like less than five. Yeah, but, but what I can suggest is when, if the board decides to approve, make this as a condition. There are four conditions that the letter was issued from the Mercer County, October four, twenty twenty-one. That should be a part of the approval, or if, if they, those four conditions has to.
Have you, have you seen the?
I'm sorry, can you just, which condition?
The four conditions came from the Mercer County, October four, twenty twenty-one letter.
Per se, but.
Because that's what they're saying, it's a long-term conditions? Okay.
Subject to that letter.
Yeah, we're bound by that, right? So, so for example, referring to paragraph one again, the county.
Because they did have some turn restrictions there. For example, you cannot make a, a left out. No, you can, you can, you cannot make a left in, but you can make a left out.
That left out would be monitored for safety.
And, and exactly, for a few periods to see if there's a crash or anything, then going to close it if, if it's otherwise.
Subject to that one, there's no need.
Correct, and they're also restricting in number three, another left out, sort of making, waiting for the gap, they would come to the signal and make a left there. Yeah. So that letter should be a part of the.
Yeah, and that's the letter dated December eighteen, two thousand nineteen, is that?
No, October four, twenty twenty-one, Mercer County. October four, October four, twenty twenty-one. Yeah, that's originally approval. It came from it came.
So what about the sidewalk?
Uh, yeah, so if, if there's no more, only one, we have a December eighteen, two thousand.
I have a letter, I can forward it to Sam.
And I have, I have an October twenty-third.
No, this is the most recent one, October four, twenty twenty-one.
Two thousand nineteen letter also has four conditions. Is it the same conditions repeated on two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those, I'm, I'm talking about those four conditions. That's, that has to be a part of the approval process as a condition.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
It should be in your pack.
We don't have the letter, I don't.
What is that? The twenty-three letter? The most recent.
The most recent one we emailed to.
Twenty-third, twenty twenty-three is the only letter that's in the packet because the new letter that came in. What Quasi is talking about is the letter that the camp. If anybody needs the recent October twenty twenty, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, I have a copy here, but you all should have had that.
No, that we had.
I have the two thousand nineteen letter, where did I get this from?
What is mentioning, I don't have.
Well, I, I can send it to Sam.
We don't have that letter because it was issued to East Windsor.
The original application. Because the most recent letter that Mercer County issued does not have those four conditions. This letter has the four conditions. That has to be a part. That's what I'm saying.
Part of the.
Yeah, without the conditions.
They just, they just didn't reiterate the four conditions from previous memos, that's all.
Correct.
But yeah, we're not trying to change any of those conditions.
Okay. Okay, so, so you're, you're okay with the four conditions that were previously included? Okay.
You know, it's an interesting application now, for just the county. To work with their map and navigation purposes only, so. They'll actually have people out there.
I think they will monitor the crashes. That's, that's.
Monitoring just if there's crashes.
Correct.
Any other questions for the traffic engineer? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would you like these slides?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, that's fine, right there is good, so the audience can see it and we can see. Can you turn it a little bit closer so that all of us can see it?
Okay, sheet seven.
Mr. Collins, would you please tell the board, is there a national and licensing background?
Sure. Good evening, my name, as I stated, is Deccaria Cullen, we're at the line here from College of New Jersey from two thousand thirteen, and the township of Monroe.
Can you just give the word, just describe generally, what are the changes that were made to the plans to accommodate this cross-access?
Sure, I'll try not to belabor it in width. It has now been revised to be twenty-four, the cartway has been revised. Other changes are coincidental to that change of widening the roadway. So there's a retaining wall here that's, that remains. It was previously existed, just shift it about six feet to the north. We have some dimensions showing that twenty-foot minimum requirement. There were some changes, comments from the traffic engineer and fire chief. The radii for this access, advise this access so that delivery vehicles, fire truck, specifically the West Windsor aerial ladder truck and garbage trucks can circulate this turn both in and out safely.
Does, does the current plan have a sidewalk or what was, what is a one-way road?
The one-way road did not have.
We haven't looked at that until tonight, but what are your thoughts about that?
Sure. So geometrically, from, from a layout perspective, it would be a little bit tight to squeeze one in there. We could probably make it work, but the, the concern that I have is more so related to grading, and I'm going to sheet ten here of the amended site plans. So here's our grading sheet. The problem that I'm seeing is the difference in, in, and then the grade that is proposed in the adjacent development Uh, the problem that I'm seeing is the difference in in and then the grade that is proposed in the adjacent development in uh in East Windsor, as you can see, the contour is coming down, what is what is now known known as Leanne Way or Road. I think there would need to be some significant grading revisions and possible coordination with uh East Windsor to make that work and and I I'm not sure that we could even get it to work at that five percent ADA, so a sidewalk could be is is three hundred and nine is the last contour that we're showing, and that's in the uh East Windsor Development. And then in our development up here, we are up or down, sorry, at one oh two is the last contour I see, but if I move over to the sanitary manhole in the middle of road B, I some, I would say it's uh a little bit more than a hundred feet maybe.
I kind of scared like.
So while you're showing, okay, I mean, I I'm looking at existing contours on the East Windsor side, and then they also show the proposed contours, and they're at basically one oh nine, and you're in.
One oh seven.
One oh seven, yeah, no.
He said, he said one oh nine is at the end of the in East Windsor.
And that's the proposed concrete.
You have hundred four, you have hundred forty feet, at least from from this area to the intersection of road B, it's not a hundred feet, it's at least a hundred thirty, a hundred forty feet.
Okay, I I accept that.
To sit here and try to design it for you, and you're not going to sit here and tell us you can't design it. So I really think it's important.
Is that right?
Um. Looking at it, uh, again, the first time I've I've really looked at this, but I have concerns about it meeting ADA requirements, um, and also I have concerns about the uh, this is not, we're not designing, we're really involved in the design, correct?
Then maybe you have to adjust the grade of the south side.
Just if if you are more than a hundred twenty, thirty feet.
I I would have to look at the exact, uh, I'm really just roughing this in here, but that's just what what I'm seeing.
Condition on this one, I tell.
Uh, Mr. Colin, what uh the engineer that you would do and the regrading that you would do, you would require cooperation from uh the Windsor Point to convert a one way connector road that the board did not at that time when it was a process. Um, so would ask that the board, well, it's it's a, it's a it's a noteworthy recommendation, we understand why you're asking, it would require us to try to try to make it work so that um it could be handicap accessible, ADA accessible, we don't know what the rating is going to turn out to be, and we would be having to, it would be contingent on cooperation next door, we can't guarantee that. So for all three of those reasons, um, we would ask that not be as a condition of this amended final people required to install sidewalk.
Okay, the the county wanted wants sidewalks, right?
Yeah.
Um, curb and sidewalk on tire, oh, that's an old Trent Road, not the cross.
Yeah. There's two, there's uh, there's another variable that had been identified tonight that do not ensure that we can make it happen.
Are aren't you in working with the East Windsor Development on the two way access cross road, you know, no?
No, no, uh, Mr. Colin, uh, am I correct that you were able to engineer to tie into their existing condition as or not existing condition, but the conditions they showed? We want sidewalks, right, one old Trent Road, so people can walk.
No, this is the crossroads.
Of the crossroad.
Old Trent Road, they're gonna, there's gonna be sidewalks going to Old Trent Road, um.
Yes, yes, we're just, I I believe the suggestion just. Again, um, it wasn't, it wasn't required uh originally, um, we understand why you're asking uh about it again and now, but again, there's too many variables that make it very uncertain whether we could accomplish it.
Are they gonna, uh, is the East Windsor Development plan show sidewalks?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Does the East Windsor plan show sidewalks on their side?
Uh, at the interior of their development, yes.
No, I'm talking about the this new connector, two way connector.
No, they do not.
So if we put the condition to put sidewalks on our side, it's gonna sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, not really, because I think, I think the majority of the traffic is within our our area, and I think that's the safety issue. You know, they go off onto the grass of looking at it like there's gonna be some immense cost to the poor developer, and I don't think that's the the case.
Here's the issue, I I agree with you, but the issue I see is that without cooperation on the side, how do you make it ADA compliant? If there's going to be grass on the others.
If it goes to a stopping.
Goes to to grass. So, yeah, we can make it a condition.
On on this development at Edinburgh Road, flanking both sides of the entry road at Edinburgh Road, there is a sidewalk along Edinburgh Road, correct, on both sides of the entry road? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so here's the, here's the question. As on the, as part of the East Windsor development, is there sidewalk along Edinburgh Road to their entry road?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure.
Do we know any, do we know that? I mean, I thought you guys knew that plan well.
I I don't have that information, I would see it on the on this plan.
Does Edinburgh Road to this intersection?
I believe so, Joe, I I can't be sure, I'll probably look it up.
No, I I would like to look it up, because Alan, that would, even though it's not your preferred sidewalk, it would provide pedestrian accessibility from the site over to the traffic.
Of going from here.
Yeah, going along here and going along and the road, it's it's not, it's it's not the most direct, but it's an alternative route.
I I understand, and I don't, I don't see that as a difficult, I don't think that they have it.
Well, she's checking, Michelle's picking it up.
The only, the other thing is this, you only have a distance of, there's sidewalk right in front of the spark when you press, and you're only like thirty feet. That would be.
I see, I see.
Yeah, so you only have a small gap. I I mean, I I appreciate that, that's good. You would think that's the case.
Okay, I I have a, I have a suggestion, is it?
We could ask. We still are not sure about the aspect of achieving the grades nonetheless.
For for the ADA compliance.
Correct.
I mean, i- is it the worst thing, if we had a sidewalk, at least it's can be walked, but it's not uh ADA compliant, or it doesn't make any sense?
Well, or will the town approve it?
Well, that's true, it has to be, uh.
Yeah.
Has to be.
Um, again, the approval that was granted to us in twenty twenty one did not require the sidewalk. I was not uh at that application, but perhaps it was because the board considered things like this, or like the con- connectivity at the front, on the frontage, and that was what's going to allow, you know, people between projects to or communities uh to walk.
That development wasn't even, uh, it wasn't around, it wasn't around at that time, so we didn't even know.
Well, no, it, well, respectfully, it was in that, that's why the one way connector was.
Yeah, we we never really.
We didn't, we weren't aware.
But around, I don't know.
Um. The the applicant is doing this as an accommodation to next door and um to be responsive to the county, we don't need it to be a two way. So, and it's not about the dollars, it's about the time and the uncertainty of being able to meet a condition. We are, you know, we're coming in with a simple request to widen it, um, so I'm I'm all for sidewalks, so it's not, it's not really not about that, it's about sort of the other shops, get bagels and food and everything, want people to be able to walk continuously and not have to be on a sidewalk on Old Trenton Road and then go into the development, and you're you're right in in the traffic with no sidewalk there.
Um, the grass.
The applicant was comfortable with with pedestrians for relation plan through twenty twenty one, uh, with the one way connector, so um, you don't really see a concern about that.
We we can't control what happens in East Windsor, we can only control what happens.
But our side, but our side.
Question for Sam, okay, we've had a lot of residential developments in West Windsor and uh along the major roads of these developments, I'm thinking of Village Road, Princeton Highstown Road, uh, there are berms. You you know, because you've got properties backing up to the either backyards with to provide some level of protection from the major roads. Now, along the major road, though, you you have sidewalks, and these sidewalks weave up and down the berms and curve and weave and up and down, are all of those sidewalks along the major roads that I've described barrier free accessible?
Yes, they are.
They are, they are, that's what I'm just wondering how, I'm thinking of another instance in West Windsor Township where this dynamic has happened.
I don't know whether in East Windsor they require a berm like we do along Old Trent Road, but that we'll we'll find out eventually whether there's even going to be a sidewalk there, but.
But but the the five percent has governed.
It shows in an East Windsor. Fran has a plan that shows the sidewalk in East Windsor going along Old Trent Road, and I know and I know that the developments that we're working with uh the county on on five seventy one is requiring, I think it's like an eight foot macadam off-road multipurpose trail, that's any new development.
With five percent max grade.
Yeah, if that's the requirement, yeah, but it's all flat up in that area.
What do you find, Michelle?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you, thanks for your research on that, yes.
I I don't want to keep going on this point here because we can't control what happened.
What what is current is a preferable alternative, if they, I mean, it would have been preferable to do it along this segment, but if you can't, this is a easier connection.
And I'm sorry, I missed.
This is a.
Um, just a, one or two more questions.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, Mr. Colin, uh, you received a a number of technical comments from board professionals and um other uh township representatives. Um, and have you been able to satisfy all of their engineering comments?
Yes, we have.
Okay, we can satisfy them, either done already or we will be able to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, um, that's all.
Okay, um, so so did we, did we uh we we know there's gonna be a sidewalk connecting to Old Trent Road, right?
Yes. Sidewalk along Old Trent Road will extend, um, excuse me, the.
Be acceptable from my perspective.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It will be acceptable from my perspective.
To go as far as the property line?
No, no, to basically forget it.
Forget it and do that, okay.
Use that.
Okay, everybody else okay with that? Okay. Um, any other questions for the applicants witnesses? No, okay, let's hear from our people.
Good, good evening, everybody, still sworn in, David Novak. I had a memo dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty three. I will be speaking a lot next week, so I'm going to be brief right now. Uh, this is a conforming application, there is no variant was to the satisfaction of the township uh landscape architect. However, Mr. Del Blominsky submitted a memo dated October eighteenth, two thousand twenty three, finding that the relocated landscaping is A okay, so unless anybody has any questions regarding the development history of this site, number of units, master planning and zoning considerations, I know that's ridiculous. About twelve years later, I'm a fully odd bull.
And basically, in that memorandum, we were concurring with the traffic engineer consultants, recommended final plat and any subsequent easements that were part of that for this roadway. Um, I did also receive a copy of the Aurora memorandum of October thirtieth, twenty twenty three, indicating that revised turning templates have been submitted by the applicant to Aurora and were some concerns about conflicts of the turning movements, and of course, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Quasi.
Thank you, thank you, Francis, the fire. Uh, the applicant has revised all three turning satisfy, and we do not have any comments uh on the turning templates, uh, but however, as I mentioned before, as uh as a traffic consultant, I think the Mercer County letter, October four twenty twenty one, there are four conditions outlined in that letter from the Mercer County, which should be a part of the approval if the board decides to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and yeah, and uh we already just, uh, we already discussed the four conditions that Mercer um, put into their memo in from two thousand twenty one, and you're okay with those four as approval for?
Yes, because they uh stand with the preliminary approval as well as the final, we're here just amending the final, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, okay, a couple of things. David's already read into the record, uh, Dan Double Miss Millsky's uh report, so everything's okay with landscaping. Regarding um uh Chief Lynch's memo dated October thirty, two thousand twenty three, he basically gives his approval um with a couple of comments, um access is included, uh, including in the plan addresses the fire apparatus. Um, uh, he also mentions, um, no parking fire lane should be created along all the curb, and you're okay with that.
Sorry, can you just repeat that last part?
Uh, due to limited access, no parking fire lane shall be created by the applicant along all curb areas to restrict curbside parking from the entire site.
That's okay, um.
This has been agreed to by the applicant. That's his, that's that's what he's saying.
Does that change anything? Yes, I guess I didn't, I don't recall the fire lane part, but yes, I um, I had um a uh provision uh or condition that there be no parking project, uh, other than designated parking spaces that were shown on the blue plans.
Now, Quasi, question for you, uh, no parking fire lanes, that could just be a a sign that says no parking, it's a fire lane, but it doesn't have to be marked on a full.
Even though.
But at the same time, if I understand correctly, the plans show there is a four feet bike lane which runs along A and B both.
Okay.
So that probably will be a fire lane.
Okay, so that would be the.
Yeah, it's a defect of Ireland.
So, so you're okay, no parking along the curbside, and I think Linda, that's where you brought a point up regarding guest parking.
Well, guest parking, any parking, this this, does this comment change anything?
No, the guest parking, what they propose is ninety seven, which complies with the township code. So as 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 for the code, twenty seven, two hundred twenty seven B two, two ninety seven is required, and they're proposing ninety seven.
Okay.
And yeah, and those are all, those are spread all over the site inside.
So curbside parking wasn't gonna happen anyway, so this doesn't change anything.
Yeah, all, all the parking spaces that were previously approved, I believe they were all delineated spaces, so there's no on street parking anywhere, it was all in delineated or striped parking spaces.
Yeah, exactly, striped parking places.
And just to continue with Chief Lynch's report, uh, fire hydrant locations are adequate. Um, turn ratios are good, and he concludes, based upon the above comments, I recommend approval, so that's Chief Lynch's report. Anybody else have any questions for our? Okay. I'll open it up to the public to step up to the microphone. Take your name and address for the record. On this application, anybody? Okay.
Do you have a comment, sir?
Want to say something, please step up, say your name and address. Want to speak after we're done with this application, because it wouldn't be fair to the applicant to not there, okay, but I'll make sure you have time. Thank you. Please step up.
And.
Hold on, sir.
And West Windsor. If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm testimony about to give for being the truth. So sworn or affirmed, thank you.
Could I have your dress again, please, I didn't hear.
Twenty six.
Twenty six. Birchwood, can you speak a little louder?
Yep, sorry about that, uh, twenty six Birchwood Court.
Perfect.
Finalations for bicycles and pedestrians. And I know that the issue is tricky because I see people all the time at Edinburgh Road, south on the road with their children, and the bikes tip over there, so whether that meets ADA. and the bikes tip over there. So whether that meets ADA or not, I know it's.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shiptel?
Yes.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Miss, Miss Barry?
Yes.
Miss Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chairman Hooperman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Anybody, um, any issues, any concerns, anybody? All your, all your concerns were answered. Satisfaction? You sure? Okay, you wanna make sure? Okay.
Not yet.
No, you can't.
Not yet.
Change or is the whole side plan?
We have a change.
This application, the cha, the change in the change in the two-way road, you have an issue with that?
No.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have any concerns regarding the application that we talked about tonight?
No, not, not, no.
Okay, some other things, but it doesn't pertain to this application? This development? Okay, step up to the microphone, please. I have been entering motion to open the public hearing back.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, you're up. Say your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm in June, and you is the last name. On from three eighty-six Princeton.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give to be the truth.
Yes, sir.
So sworn or affirmed, and again, could you state your name and spell your last name?
Last name is, spelled with Y U, first name is June.
How do you spell the last name?
Our property is, uh, this, uh, in the, uh, where on the road, where that, you know, they go, it's adjacent to Conquest N. And uh, where I see it, it's like, uh, I think that could be some opportunity of, you know, security, you know? Um, I don't think there's a, this department have a gated uh info.
Gated control.
Well, uh, on the left, left and top, on the most right there, the area is woody area. Who, you know, kind of change, you know, a lot of the feelings, you know, very hot, but I think it's like, uh,
Do something nefarious.
I'm starting activities.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I'm kind of, it's kind of like, uh, about that, yeah, and uh, you know, anybody but in what is a woody area, you know, stay there, it's what I can see, you know, from outside, so at the same time, there's a yeah, that's, that's my question, and when that, you know, or something. I just remember like how, or what's the measure, how this uh of use there.
Is there no, is there no open space?
If you remember, one of the conditions that we imposed upon American properties, the prior developer, was that they were to dedicate that property to the township. It would be part of the Zeitz uh Preserve, which is out on Southfield Road. There's currently a farm road that goes through there. I've walked that. There's a trail back there. It'll basically be a trail that'll connect this development with the um uh, the playgrounds and the soccer fields over on Southfield Road.
And there's no development that can happen on that wooded area?
No, it's deed restricted. It's just for open space and the Cape have dedicated it to the township.
Okay, so it's not gonna get developed, it's gonna stay wooded?
No, that's not our question. If you want, one of us must be in there, at least at this point, of the things like that. Before, I mean, I'd never seen any kind of traffic, you know, like any kind of foot traffic walking through that area. And that's like far from any kind of, it's not really bespoke on any other houses or any people. You know, you know what I mean, that's, that's like kind of formula for, you know, people to like hide there and do something, I mean, I I'm sure that most likely it's not gonna happen. Or like, oh, oh, like we have a property there, like, we don't want people to like, so pretty much, from like, so much time, the western side, it's a good, you know, unexpected. I'm sure that people will start to explore, you know, surround this, once, you know, people start to be there. And, uh, I don't know, it's possible, maybe, or the government to make the to, you know, that is current, you know, like, going there, that was, if you said there's a shrine going through, through the wood and to the park.
Behind your property, correct?
Probably, the people of this property will probably want to, it will be encouraged to use both with the trail.
Correct, yes. And that property is not owned by this developer anymore, it's owned by the township. Correct. More so than you're seeing now, correct? If you know where your property boundary is there, you may want to install no trespassing signs, private property, so it lets folks know that the public property ends at a certain spot, and then it's private property after that. There are no plant plans that I'm aware of that the town's gonna put a fence in along that property line. And that wouldn't be this board's jurisdiction. It would be the township council, if they want to have funds appropriated to put a fence in, that would be something that would be done through a capital budget.
Thank you. I want to take a motion to close the public hearing. Again.
So moved.
Uh, moved by Alan, seconded by Annis. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, okay, good day. Any concern?
I will always be concerned about that left-hand turn onto uh uh Route five seventy-one. Yeah, it's up to the county.
They're staying.
Feeling about doing that. Right, but.
Okay, um. Do you want to give like a summary?
Yeah, um. This is an application for amended, um. I guess it would be amended preliminary and final um major site plan approval, and would would there be a major amended subdivision approval also? And subdivision approval? And I suggest the following conditions, which come out of the discussions, were to the county October four, two thousand twenty-one letter, and the applicant will comply with all of them. Sam, you can get me a copy of that, that'd be great. Then the proposed easement and roadway, as per uh Francis's comment number two, will have to be modified to reflect responses to the technical uh review uh by Aurora. And that would be uh subject to uh to review by the uh the engineer, our engineer. Cross-access easement should be su- subject to the review by Francis and me. Then we have, um. Yeah, I think. The only other thing is um the two conditions from uh Chief Lynch's memo, uh, no fo, no parking fire lanes should be created by the applicant along all curb areas. Um, and the position of fire department connection reports, the fire sprinkler system shall be at the front of the building. Um, and that's it.
Are you, I, I. In Chief Lynch's memo, the position, you're okay with that? It's under miscellaneous first bullet.
Oh, was it multiple building? How many buildings are there, since? I mean, there's multiple buildings, right? Yeah.
Any clarification on that then?
That's not part of this application, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's not part of it, okay.
There's no fire connection there?
No, this.
Oh, right.
Anything else, Jerry?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve um this application. PB nineteen dash oh eight as amended, and with the conditions enacted by our planning board attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Annis, please call the roll.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shiptel?
Yes.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Miss Barry?
Yes.
Miss Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hooperman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion, uh, application approved, thank you.
We have a meeting next week. I left the packet in the agenda for you. You also got electronic copies of all that information about a month ago, so this is just a hard copy for you.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.